Nobody will hear anything, but I'm live. Did you need one?
Hmm?
Did you need one?
All right, we'll call border. We'll call Ken. Doug?
Yep.
Joel?
Yep.
Sue?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Privilege is in there?
Okay, private. Second.
Session? Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Ken? Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
All right. Uh, session action on GIS mapping. Uh, so we just got an email here from, this was from Scott.
Yeah, Scott's bullet points on the situation, his opinion.
Okay, Scott says that Kevin with Silver Smith is very upfront about policy, provides all instruments needed to perform their work, including iPad, the data charge of six hundred for an unknown data package. Other vendors upfront stating that we would have to prepay for blocks of hours at this time for an unknown amount of time to start with. We have no idea how many hours it will take to enter our information and become familiar with the new system. Kevin's a local person living in Norwalk. He has made it clear that even after spending whatever time is needed to set up our system, if we need help at any time and the time doesn't add up to significant number of hours, it won't cost the city any more money. Story County's vendors nearest rep lives in Omaha and would have to do everything over the phone or schedule time that works with them to help us out. Collins and Cambridge both use the vendor. They were happy with them and would be happy to answer any questions we have. Uh, Tony and I have our, had our hands on both systems and we prefer to go with Silver Smith. We are going with county's vendor due to using Snyder and Associates to have our information. They will charge us to manage the system. And I know we don't have a money tree to pick from. Kevin stated, stated that we own that information. They would enter all the information we could provide them. We are voting to go with the system that Snyder and Associates, Associates will manage. We are self, setting ourselves up for failure, being business Snyder and Associates forever because we will be in too deep with them to get back out, even if it is a physical responsibility. Those were Scott's thoughts. Tony? You also have thoughts?
Um, the Silver Smith, Kevin, it was all cut and dry, plain and simple price for the equipment, price for the yearly subscription. Um, Joe with his, good guy, good equipment. But it sounds like through them, the managing of the system, so Silver Smith will manage it, do everything. That's part of our six hundred dollars for the data, the subscription, whatever. Um, through Joe, they could manage it. We would have to find somebody to manage it. They could manage it and charge us, or they don't like to do that. They deal with engineering firms and then we hook up with the engineering firm to manage it for us and would have to pay them. And that was kind of, if you looked at their quotes, there's a whole bunch of, you know, Kevin's was cut and dry. Here it is. Joe's was a little more of, mm, yeah, I don't know. Here's a bunch of stuff might need, might not need.
So, talked to Matt Corey who manages the GeoSpacial for, uh, Story County. Uh, for the email that I sent off to everybody. Uh, basically what he was saying is there are three items on this list of the estimate that we have to have. Uh, one is the catalyst receiver. Uh, the other is catalyst on demand, which is a ten hour pack, which that can be upgraded for different amounts of hours. And then the other one is the ArcGIS, uh, professional basic term license. Uh, but he said that that is usually better bought separately from the company that actually sells that product, not through Siler.
Mm-hmm.
So, which, even if we pay for the accessories that he included on here, which, uh, Matt mentioned that those accessories are all available off of Amazon, they're substantially less. Even if we paid for all of the accessories, the sixteen hundred thirty-six upfront with seven sixty-five annual uh, versus the sixty-four oh four upfront and eighteen thirty-four annual.
I'd call the salesmen. I wouldn't go a hundred percent off what Matt says.
Okay.
Cause that's, when we had Joe here from Siler and I finally beat him up and said, listen dude, I need a quote. What is this gonna cost us? You get set up to do it and then every year. And that's where then we came up with that other quote that he had for the sixteen nine sixty-three.
Sixty-nine.
So.
Sixty-nine eighty-six.
My concerns are that what Story County is using, uh, the Esri product is a national standard. Uh, it's essentially, uh, open architecture software. Uh, you could go online to, uh, 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 watch instruction videos. Uh, got all kinds of them on YouTube. Uh, it is, uh, such a standard product that, uh, it's taught, uh, it is what is taught in the universities um, for the GIS classes. Uh, I understand the concern, uh, that Kevin has, uh, uh, concerning Snyder Associates. I'm not sure that, uh, we would, by going with, I am certain that by going with Esri, we are not tied to Snyder Associates. Uh, and I'm also uncertain just what Snyder and Associates would be charging us under point number five. Uh, if we have our information, it's our information, it's not Snyder's. Uh, only if we are asking them to do additional things would they be, uh, uh, charging us. The database behind, uh, the Esri product is what you want it to be. If we want to have inverts and, uh, on our sewer line, uh, and, uh, that's all we want to have, then that's all that's in the database. The database from, uh, the silver, whatever it is, uh, was constructed to fit a number of different large and small communities. And so it has all kinds of elements that we would never use. Uh, we can certainly, um, use best practice and include those things in our database that, uh, we may want to someday add, or we can just put in the database the things that we will need now and then add stuff later. It's databases are very simple to, uh, correct that way when it is your database as opposed to a vendor's proprietary database. And that's my biggest concern with Silver Smith, that it is a proprietary system. It is not a standard. Uh, and as such, uh, my concern would be that, uh, just like a, uh, the software that we had in the past, uh, for our financial system, when the company went out of business, we had to heck of a time converting everything over. You wouldn't have that problem with Esri, uh, because of its open architecture nature. So I would like to, uh, find out. I think Tony has an excellent point that let's get the vendor back in here and let's compare apples to apples. Exactly what do we need in their system to do what we want to do compared to what Silver Smith says that we need to do what we want to do.
Maybe including Matt in that as somebody that has some information on it?
I, I certainly would. Why not?
It's not salesmen.
Well, no, I, I would, just as a informational person.
But.
I'm not asking for Matt to sell it to us. I'm just asking for Matt's expertise with using their system on a day-to-day basis because he's likely the person that we would be relying on to call if we had a question versus, I mean, if he can save us a thousand dollars or sixteen hundred dollars a year in, in annual reoccurring training costs that we could get through the county, then that's the way we want to do it.
Mm-hmm.
At least in my, my point of view. I, and I know he, he is not salesman for it, but, um, he has enough experience utilizing the system. And, uh, I mean, it's the same system that they use, so we use it on day-to-day.
Well, I would say at the next council meeting, I'll get both salesmen here and Matt here and let them all battle it out and you can ask your questions.
I don't want to do it at a council meeting. I want it to be done ahead of time so, so that, uh, everybody can roll their sleeves up and, uh, armor wrestle is necessary.
Okay.
And having them both at the same time, I don't think benefits anything. Uh, do them sequentially or whatever.
Well, I'm still one step behind. Is this something we absolutely need, Tony, from your perspective? Yeah, it is. It's, we can start, cause we've got, um, maps from the sewer that Schneider did that are ours, but it's in their system. We'd be able to get this over into ours. We'd be able to add to it, build onto it, you know, it doesn't matter whose it is. We could map hydrants, manholes, people's curb stops in their yard and have, you know, GPS coordinates to go back later on and.
Storms or intake.
Aid and ease in finding stuff and then it's written down on record for ever, hopefully.
So, the other thing Matt had mentioned was that a system can also be utilized for grave mapping. So basically creating a map that includes everybody that's in both the cemeteries and that location pinpoint where that can be uploaded to find and carry for those people who are looking for their ancestors.
Silver Smith has it too. So, that's where I said, bring the salesman in and then let you guys ask the questions and all of that.
We're not experts in what, what we're gonna be using it for. Like me personally, I don't, I mean, I understand the idea and the principle behind what it is.
Um, I'm not a whole lot ahead of you. Like I said, other than knowing the concept, the idea, having the post-salesman here, we took them out, we played with them, we mapped, we went back, we found. That was my main concern was going out and marking a pebble, walk around for a while and then have it take me back to that pebble.
I think what might be beneficial is if you do the same for both sides. See if you can borrow Collins or Cambridge's
Well, we have.
to come over here while you're talking to the vendor and, and have those separate meetings. Have a meeting with their vendor, with somebody who's using their system, have a meeting with the other vendor, with Matt, somebody who's using their system and get apples to apples on what, what costing it is, cause that's, that's our biggest thing.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't know how much the actual cost is to buy the system, to put it into play, use today. And then we also need to know what is our annual reoccurring cost, because that's the cost that they're gonna continue to cost us.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if Darren Kennedy would come over from Collins, maybe?
Him or Dale.
Or one of the two.
One of the two.
But if we could work that out, I'd say if you want to work on that, maybe whatever that's not selling.
I can do that. What works for you guys, Keith?
We get, so we got a lot of meetings over the next couple of months. You just let me know when you've completed, we'll bring it up. I'll get it added to, to that agenda.
I mean, I want them to meet with you guys. You guys to get me questions and I, I don't want to be the middleman no more. I've been working on this for two years and I've already given up once, so.
Well, that was the thing is I heard that it was given up on and I don't want to see that fall through again. So, we are, well, I think what Steve is asking is that we're, we're not gonna use the system. So we're asking for you to get true life feedback from both of the vendors one more time and, and then come to us and tell us which system you exactly want. Didn't you say you've already, you've already had hands on?
We've got them. Salesmen brought out both. We just played luck around a little bit. I haven't, I, I'd say I've been reaching out to Dale and, uh, Darren and see how they're liking theirs and all that.
I mean, basically done all the legwork.
We've heard from Matt. Matt's is the best in the world. I'm guessing Darren and Dale probably say the same thing. They're just the best in the world, so I don't know.
But the dollar signs need to be firmed.
That's probably our biggest concern is that we really don't know now what, what Matt said about Siler, if that's actually what we need.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's try and nail down Siler and say, hey, what do we actually need to get the system actually running versus all this riffraff that's added in here?
Mm-hmm.
At least if it is riffraff or if it's, or if there is a.
Well, that's what I thought I had last time.
If we have to have a server, then that, that needs to be, I mean, if, if there's a difference between paying the sixteen hundred dollars a year for a full day remote or we have to buy our own server to manage it, then that's something we need to know. That's the type of thing that we're looking for. Does that cover that? Steve?
Yeah, I'll be available, uh, uh, to sit down, uh, whenever they come in. My job from nineteen ninety to, uh, twenty-ten was, uh, GIS systems, so.
Steve knows a lot of experience in that.
There we go. That's what I need.
That's what I was just gonna say. Are there specific questions that you need from the council?
Yes, that's, that's why I want, trying to, I'd say, gonna call all of you, some of you. One of you, I'd be happy with anybody, but I need to get you guys involved. It's, and it sounds like Steve knows a lot of questions to ask when you get into this stuff and the whole financial thing. That's a good point and I don't know.
But Steve with no questions to ask. Other than dollars, I don't, and I don't know if there's any other questions that anybody has that you could pass on to Steve or Tony and able to make this an easy transition.
Well, certainly keep Scott's, uh, questions in mind.
Yep.
I think they need to be fully addressed, so. But, you know, uh, as far as Esri is concerned and their educational, uh, availability, uh, you know, they're pretty much the benchmark for everybody.
I don't have any qualms or concerns about that, but like I said, we're getting, what I'm going off of is we're getting numbers all over the place. And we got a guy throwing balls from left field at us and.
What, what you want to be able to do is to take your equipment, go out there.
Yeah, I just want to be able to mark something and come back in six months, six days, two years and find that spot again.
Or you'll be able to mark it and then enter the data that is important for that thing.
Oh, yeah, we can input pictures, we can put all kinds of notes.
Be able to retrieve selective data, not only location, but do analysis and say, uh, you know, like what's, what's the slope of the pipe between these two manholes? Uh, uh, where's all the stormwater inlets? Uh, uh, and where, uh, where are all the outlets? And how do they tie together, you know? How easy is it to use? That's what, uh, is gonna be most important to you.
Yeah, and like from what, little bit when we tried out, do you from the salesman, they're both fairly simple. And you find your spot, you drop a pin, you can take a picture and then put it on that spot, enter all your information. I'm just going off of the aspect of, a lot of stuff in here would be able to be put down on that.
Yep.
Yep.
For later use, later reference, the next guy down the road.
Absolutely. I think that's the whole point of this, of this process.
Mm-hmm.
So. All right, so Tony, I'll ask that you, uh, get ahold of Siler and if you really could ban that, uh, talk through what we would actually need to get rolling, noting that we have a resource available hereby, uh, as well as a training resource, cause he offered to assist with any training needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, see, see if we can come up with a, a better understanding of what their actual costs are. I know it was much clearer with the other guy.
Yeah.
Um, it was an easy, that's an easy piece, but we still need to be able to compare apples to apples.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think that requires the council actions. Any other thoughts?
Okey-dokey. Yep.
Let's go, we've got his notes.
Yep. Yep, I'll pass that along and hopefully I can, same thing, pick a day when he's here and.
Yep.
Have Steve here and Scott and I here.
Check with me if I'm, if I'm around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure info and date get put out to anybody and everybody, so.
All right.
Anybody who can show up, feel free to show up and ask the questions and help us, so. Okay.
Thanks, Tony.
Yep.
No action on four, so move on to five. Budget planning for fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five. We have the parks and the library budget. Start with the library budget. That work for you, Steve?
Sure.
Uh, they're asking for their new budget, uh, salary to maintain at nineteen-five, which was their twenty-four budget as well. They have grounds and maintenance repair at fifty-five hundred, which is the same as it was in twenty-four. Then were they asking for something for diapers and fiendo for you?
Well, the calculation on that would be what is shown up there.
Okay.
One thousand four hundred and ninety and one thousand eight hundred and forty.
So, same again.
And I did not, uh, the rest of the numbers in here, uh, is, since I didn't have their numbers, I just took the average of what they spent in twenty-twenty-two and spent in twenty-twenty-three and increased it by five percent. So, they're asking for five thousand five hundred, which is what they, not last year, but it's, uh, not, this is grounds.
Grounds maintenance.
So I, I had two hundred dollars. Grounds.
So they spent ninety-two seventy-six. They had a budget of fifty-five hundred. Did they get grand money for that?
They, they.
The, the grounds has actually been moved year to day spent. Most of that has been spent to capital equipment because that was all remodeled.
So.
I just moved it all.
Okay, so what's the number?
In grounds right now?
Yeah.
They haven't spent anything in grounds right now.
Okay, so all the nine thousand two hundred, uh, and seventy-six dollars and fifty-two cents is added to the two hundred thirty-nine ninety-eight.
They just told me to move all that to the capital. I just did. Sorry.
So. Capital two hundred and thirty-nine ninety-eight. Plus.
Ninety-five sixteen fifty, if you just wanna add it.
Ninety.
Ninety-two seventy-six.
Seventy-six, wait, fifty-two. And that becomes zero. And they want five thousand five hundred dollars? Why?
I don't know. I just got this budget just like half an hour ago.
The five thousand that they had for grounds, maintenance and repair this year, uh, was for a specific project, if I remember correctly. They were going to do some landscaping or something.
I think so, but I don't remember.
The average amount spent in twenty-two and twenty-three with a five percent increase yields two hundred dollars. So, I would take question, I would question their five thousand. Telephone did the average twenty-nine hundred dollars, not three-seven fifty. Uh, I have no idea. And they're on schedule to spend thirty-two. So, uh, they have additional costs this year they didn't have last year? All right.
So, should we factor a five percent again?
Well, five percent is factored in on the twenty-nine.
So if you take their thirty-two and add five percent for next year, we could be looking at thirty-three sixty.
Two thirty. Where do you see thirty-two?
So this, uh, you said that basically they were at thirty-two hundred, cause they're sixteen hundred for half the year.
Yeah.
So if you went thirty-two hundred and added five percent, be thirty-three sixty for next year's phone budget, which might change altogether as well. Is that internet info? Could very well go down.
Yep.
Need to check into that too, since we did the internet and stuff.
Did you sign up for the city or library? Now, okay.
So, if we had, uh, if we take twice what we've spent so far and times, uh, hundred and five percent and round it to the nearest ten dollars, it's thirty-three seven.
Good. That's close.
Yes. Uh, technology services. Their average in the previous two years was fifteen hundred. They're, uh, on track to, uh, do what, twenty-seven hundred? So if we do the same thing we did for telephone and just use year-to-date times two, I don't know if their technology is even every month or if it's a, a one-time payment.
It's multiple payments, but, and I think they're mostly like through all their payments for it. I think they've only got one more for something.
So be closer to the fifteen fifty-five number? So call it sixteen hundred times a five percent increase?
Well, with the average of, uh, fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three with a five percent increase, it's sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three hundred.
And that again.
That's way too much.
Yeah, you're on the top line item there.
We're still on technology services.
Oh. It's, uh, the average of, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three increased by five percent is fifteen hundred.
I think since they spent more than fifteen hundred in the year twenty-three, we should probably keep that in consideration. Granted, they only have one more payment, I just don't know how often it is, so guessing it's probably close to, I mean, if it's two hundred, they're looking at fifteen ninety for the year.
We can always just take what we, what was, uh, uh, last year and uh, increase that by five percent.
It'd be sixteen eighty then, roughly.
Any other racer?
Sixteen hundred.
I think that's safe there.
Library materials, the average of the last two years increased by five percent, sixty-three hundred. And they're asking for ten thousand.
I did talk to Hannah about that one. They haven't been spending much on books and stuff because of the turn, the couples they were having with the previous, um, director. And so they haven't been paying, spending as much. And then books have gone from like seventeen dollars a book to over twenty. So they were figuring higher. That's why they chose the ten thousand.
Well, I would say they got seventy-one hundred dollars to spend the remaining of this year and then another sixty-three next year, they're still over ten thousand.
There you go. It's, to me, it's wants versus needs. That's just my, the explanation to give me.
The library materials is kind of one of them, needs for them, cause that's what they focus on, is providing reading materials for the public.
Well, five percent increase from the fiscal year twenty-four budget.
But they've only spent less than a thousand over this year.
That's true.
So there's Dale's.
Leave it at sixty-three.
But they still have their big things, like their summer reading program coming up yet.
That they're buying for.
That will be.
Do they buy books for that?
Not necessarily books, but the, um, crafts and stuff they do for all.
Consumables.
Consumables.
Well, twenty-four, five percent is eighty-four hundred per, if we want to get to that one, that's two thousand dollars for one sixty-three.
Did they utilize the A A A ban? Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Stupid.
Just get a little complex there for a minute there, Steve. Went into some degrees.
The difference between, uh, a desktop and a tablet. What we want.
Should just be call it F eighty-seven times one zero five. Plus F eighty-seven.
So eighty-seven, not divided by two. Times a hundred and five, comma, minus one rounding.
There it is.
The number you guys had five minutes ago. Uh, uh, library equipment. The average of what they spent the last couple of years increased by five percent gives them six hundred dollars.
We had three thousand last year spent.
Three thousand in the current year and they haven't spent anything.
Maybe they were gonna get some new chairs. But that would be this year's.
They're asking for twenty-five hundred?
Three thousand, buy a lot of chairs.
Would much better than what was wasted.
The next two line items, six hundred and seven hundred are the averages increased by five percent. What is up there now, uh, is kind of a summary of the library. You have expenses, uh, in excess of revenue, and they haven't even done their revenue. What I did on their revenue, I did the same thing, it took the previous two years, only I multiplied it times ninety-five percent rather than a hundred and five percent, be a little more conservative. You take their, uh, expenses and subtract the revenues from it and ignore benefits and any transfers in from the trust, uh, because that was a one-time thing. Uh, then in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we have eight, so far eighteen thousand dollars over and above what our revenue is. Uh, we have a taxable value. The state says we have to spend at least, uh, six and three-quarter cents per thousand on the library if we're gonna have a library. And so that's two thousand one hundred and nine dollars, state minimum. Well, in the budget they have so far, uh, when you take, uh, all the expenditures, including benefits, uh, we are contributing nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars over and above the minimum, which is equivalent of, uh, sixty-two cents a thousand out of our eight dollars and ten cents. Uh, well, it's, yeah. And since we have to do sixty-two cents, we're doing fifty-eight cents over and above what we're minimally required in fiscal year fif- uh, twenty-two. We're doing fifty-one cents, fiscal year twenty-three, we're doing, uh, uh, twenty, uh, five cents. And this would be, or not twenty-five, but fifty-two.
Fifty-three.
Excuse my dyslexia. And, uh, this year would be fifty-eight. Last year it was way up around eighty because, uh, of some one-time expenditures that the council approved. So.
So we're paying roughly double what the state says we have to.
Or paying ten times what the state requires.
Yeah. We've.
Twenty-one hundred is what the state requires.
Yeah.
To fund the library for our population.
Alright.
So, uh, we are already, uh, over and above our funding in twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, a greater increase than the increase in valuation. Because we're at fif- fifty-eight cents instead of fifty-two cents. And that's if we leave those last two at six hundred and seven hundred instead of the requested two thousand and five thousand. If we uh, six hundred and seven hundred, two thousand and five thousand. Takes us up to
Five thousand higher, yeah.
As high as what it was.
You're missing.
Yeah, you're missing the number there.
Twenty-five hundred, then two thousand, and then they want five thousand.
Pardon?
That one, they're wanting twenty-five hundred.
Oh.
And that's what they should have dropped down.
Then there should be a two thousand there.
And then the five thousand.
That's even worse.
Yes, yeah.
Takes us up to sixty-eight cents a thousand instead of the, uh, uh, around fifty that we were at.
I wish they would have given an explanation.
Me too. Here's, here's what I see from it, um, their, their ask is two thousand dollars less than, almost two thousand dollars less than their twenty-four budget. But their twenty-four budget also had annual, a one-time annual allotments in there that weren't in there, when we go back to the twenty-three spent, they spent twenty-four thousand, twenty-two spent, spent thirty. Well, I fully understand they're want to improve the library. It's still tax dollars paying for it.
At once, yeah.
And fifty-four thousand is a long ways away from even thirty in twenty-two.
The thirty-seven thousand seven hundred is more than we spent in twenty-two. Uh, more than we spent, considerably more than we spent in twenty-three. And yes, I can see where those are trying times for the library. Uh, and, but the, uh, thirty-seven seven is a, uh, increase and we'll just see how uh, that goes and, uh, if there, they had, uh, five thousand dollars in capital equipment, uh, I would say that once they provide details on the capital equipment, uh, and we could always entertain a budget amendment next year.
They also have like twenty-seven thousand dollars in their trust fund that they can use for capital equipment.
Yep.
And capital fund would be their computers and such over there.
Yeah.
Well, they also have another equipment fee which they're asking for twenty-five hundred on and we got eleven hundred spent in twenty-two, forty-three spent in twenty-three. The three thousand dollar budget this year that they haven't spent a penny of.
I just wanted to see if that six hundred dollars.
Is that what it was?
Okay, okay. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's the same concept of both of those line items.
So, hey, I'm, I'm a couple minutes.
That's alright, yes.
Hundred, seven hundred, and then zero for that.
On the revenue side.
Can you go back to that?
Pardon?
Can you go back to that one moment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. You're good, thank you.
On the revenue side, uh, for the library, it's the these three line items right here are library revenues. And they said on their sheet that, uh, the February sixteenth meeting will determine the state budget. Uh, well, okay, that's great. When they get the new numbers, we can certainly replace the ones that I have. Uh, and the ones that I have are ninety-five percent of the average of, uh, twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. Now, the thirteen hundred dollars we've received so far, is that a, uh, do we get more than one payment from the state?
Could have to go look.
That's okay, they're, they're gonna come up with some numbers. The, uh, so those three numbers are the averages of, uh, the last two fiscal years. Has nothing to do with this year's budget. Uh, and since I don't know on the year-to-date whether it's what's represented the year-to-date is kind of half of what they should be getting. The county library contribution, one looks like it's all there, then we're not gonna get another one. Although, who knows? There may be another payment, uh.
Definitely have one more.
With the payment.
This year, for some reason, they readjusted the way that they, the county gave out money this year. And we were supposed to get more than what we've had in the past.
Okay, well, if we can get some better numbers, we'll put them in. Until then.
I'll have Hannah.
Until then, uh, they have an increase in their. they have an increase in their budget. And of that increase we'll have to figure out whether we're going to take it out of the general fund or like we did in the past, some past years, say that's community betterment and it comes out of local option sales tax. But that happened, well, that decision is made when we do balance it.
Is that the eighteen thousand?
Yeah.
The initial funds needed?
And you can look at fire and EMS essentially the same way. There is a certain tax limit for the townships. And if we use that as that sixty point seven-five cents per thousand as what we match them, that'd be eighteen thousand. We have to come up with another twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty dollars to make our share of fire EMS. Now, it's always in the past been the same way. This just says if we are tax, taxing people the same here as there, then we're gonna have to throw in some extra money from someplace, general fund or local option sales or wherever. And again, when we get to balancing, we'll make those decisions. So both library and EMS have contributions that come in from elsewhere. And I could print out a copy of what we did tonight so that it can be communicated to the library board. And they can come back at some future meeting and provide justification and we can see where we are at the end of the budget process if there's additional money. So that takes us down to parks. And these are all the numbers from the park board meeting. First four numbers are from the salary work sheet that we did at our last meeting. Hundred dollars in training. Same as last year, we have Scott who's gonna be doing additional training. Building maintenance in the park is the hundred and five percent. However, in twenty-twenty-three, we had a grant that went in there. So subtract the gap grant out, doing the average and taking two times what we spent year-to-date and averaging the three together, you get six hundred and twenty dollars. For building, maintenance, repair, so is that.
I got it wrong, you're at eight thirty, right?
I am on the.
This is six twenty, there it is.
Six twenty.
I'm sorry.
Helps if I put the cursor where it goes. Since we're only at thirty dollars. All of our building, maintenance, repair may be being done in the spring. We have a thousand dollars budgeted. We could average the twenty-two, twenty-three and the budget for twenty-four together. Instead of the year-to-date spending. Or we could just take our.
I think the averages work with the subtraction of the grant funds consecutives is a pretty good idea.
Should I average in the fiscal year twenty-four budget or the?
I think that would help give us an idea because that was something that was worked out at the last council that at that time they thought a thousand dollars was appropriate. At least including that number gives a little more fortune space.
So we have the average of those three. Which is nine hundred and fifty dollars, pretty close to the thousand.
Yep.
Increased by five percent. Ground maintenance, again, we had some big expenses, wiring and did some cans, got the garbage cans that were spent in there. And if you take all those expenses out.
Steve, you remember why there was a fourteen thousand dollar budget last year?
Now, that's what I was saying, that includes
True.
Some work at the rodeo.
The electricity rodeo?
Garbage cans, not all the electricity, I think there was more, something around twenty thousand or something.
Seventeen thousand rodeo.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's in there, yeah.
Okay.
In twenty-three, yes. Seventeen thousand for the rodeo, four thousand eight hundred for the cans and ten thousand dollars for trees from DNR. So you have, you take all those out and you end up with ground maintenance and repair. We've only spent seven.
Seven dollars.
Seven dollars. But this again might be something that something which we spend more money in the spring and early summer. So if we take the average of those three numbers excluding the special projects. And you end up with five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. And maybe we just wanna, I don't know.
Jeff, what is the ground maintenance or repair? What is, what else gets put into that fund or expenses wise?
Trees.
So.
If.
Like the bridge that's had fixed. Have it just had fixed recently, that one.
Yeah.
Different things that require repair at the park. We had to paint the van shelter this year.
If we have to do underground wiring.
Lights.
I think that's a good starting point.
Fifty-seven twenty?
Yep.
Vehicle maintenance and repair again is twenty fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three and twice what we've spent year-to-date, assuming that our repair happens periodically through the year.
Well, yeah, spring, spring maintenance on road moors and things like that comes in. I know that was one of the things I saw early last spring was some pretty hefty maintenance repairs, taking the dollars in.
Which is why it's six thousand dollars. But if you average out the previous year and last year and twice what we've spent already this year, comes up to forty-eight hundred dollars. Operational equipment repairs, same. Well, just the average of the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three because we hadn't spent anything yet and we're only talking about six hundred dollars, so six hundred and twenty dollars. Utilities for the park, doing a hundred and thirty percent on utilities, the decision we made at the last council meeting. So average of what we've spent so far times two plus the previous two fiscal years.
A small increase over the twenty-four budget, so it works out.
Professional services. We spent extra in fiscal year twenty-two to get indication of all the trees that need to be cut down. So the parks department just said five hundred dollars will be plenty. So it's not an average of anything. Chemicals for the park. Again, average of the two years. And at the time I didn't have any expenditure, well, I don't know. Is the nine hundred dollars pretty much all we're gonna spend in the year?
Probably going to be close.
Okay, so we'd double it, but may do, may add it to the average.
When he buys chemicals, he would buy it in bulk.
Well, let's just add it to the average.
Weed killer, is that included? The bug spray?
Mosquitoes, no, it has its own good thing.
So twelve hundred and ten dollars, which is about the same as what we have budgeted this year. Equipment for the parks. Twenty-six hundred, almost nine thousand, budgeting a thousand dollars. Year-to-date. We've spent five hundred, so we're gonna be close to the thousand. The average. The, what the parks department suggested for an average was the current budget plus five percent. Operating supplies.
Are those grant funds on those equipments for the parks in previous years that covered those?
That eight thousand?
Eight thousand, eight hundred, and then the twenty-six hundred, because those are substantially higher than.
I, I don't think so.
Twenty-four budget. Alright, move on.
I think I don't remember there being any grant money for equipment in the parks. Trucks paid off, so we don't have that, four thousand six hundred dollars that we need to budget. Which gives us a budget of sixty-four seven sixty. Which is down from the previous two fiscal years and down from what we had budgeted, but part of that is because we were adding a pro, new program. Which is trees. Where we'll have a thousand dollars worth of trees that we're gonna plant and nine hundred dollars of maintenance on the trees. So an additional nineteen hundred dollars, but even that two thousand still brings us in under the previous two budgets.
We've got the pickup paid off, but do we need to start rattle on some money for whatever's coming next?
You want to put sixteen foot in?
We do have a depreciation account where we're taking money. Where is the parks share of the backhoe? Maybe.
That'd be the capital. Equipment for the parks in twenty-two spent, twenty-four thousand.
Yeah.
I think we missed, I think I missed the capital equipment. Let's see, the backhoe.
Plus another ten, I would have added some other things.
We should be paying
So a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
One thousand eight hundred dollars. Into a capital account for large equipment replacement.
Which then go into last year.
Right, this would be.
Should have started last year.
Should have started last year. Let's see, expenses, eighteen hundred dollars.
Can we catch up last year's too?
Probably should.
Thirty-six hundred. Yeah.
Well, if, if, what we do is we put in eighteen hundred dollars in this year's budget and then we make sure we transfer eighteen hundred dollars out of the money that at, by the end of the year, out of our unspent balances. I would put in thirty-six hundred. I'm just trying to figure out, let's see, parks and roads is the other place. We want to get it in the right line item.
Is that, I just want to ask real quick on that truck, is that the gray Chevy that the one that's paid off?
No, it's the ghost.
The ghost? That's what it's ghost.
Come on, you don't know what the ghost is, the new flatbed.
So the gray Chevy's paid for?
Yeah, it was made a month ago.
Yeah, we need to replace it, it looks like trash.
What? You're wrecking it.
They'd bang up a new one.
Is it three times?
It has been repaired. It still looks bad.
Yeah, well, the last time you did a turkey with it.
So, we're doing this all out of, out of line on sixty-seven twenty-seven. And we don't have one in road use.
Clear at the top.
Sixty-seven ninety-seven, sixty-seven ninety-nine is equipment for it.
What?
Sixty-seven ninety-nine is the castle equipment for it.
Okay.
I don't know what.
Okay, so eighteen hundred there, and then in parks. Library, parks. Eighteen hundred there. And it was already down in sewer and water.
Write a memo there so you know what it was?
Yes. Must have catwalk some.
Didn't need a silly.
Covered up, will that help? Good move.
I was suffering the same thing.
Oh, Lord.
We just don't need to create that sinking fund. Okay.
So where would we talk about the sinking fund for vehicles? Would, would you add that, look at adding that for this year's budget, or would we have to?
Needs to be put into this year's budget because, uh, uh, this, we were supposed to have a place to be putting that eighteen hundred dollars times four and do a transfer into it so that we can start building up, uh, cash reserves.
So then if we wanted to add another vehicle to that, then we would also do that, put it in a separate account?
Well, no, we did, I would say what we do is we put it all into the same sinking fund account.
We just know how much money is in there and who was provided for what.
Yeah, right now, the backhoe is the only large piece of equipment that we're amortizing. If we wanna amortize a pickup, then what we would do is say, okay, it's fifty thousand dollars, uh, and it's gonna be good for five years. And so that's ten thousand dollars and it's used across four different funds equally. So that's two thousand five hundred dollars more from each one of those funds. Or if it's gonna be only used by roads, then it'd be ten thousand dollars from roads. But it all goes into one, uh, revolving fund. Uh, we just identify equipment that is being amortized, goes into the revolving fund and then, uh, depends on its amortization schedule, uh, we should be able to be in a place to buy new.
I think we should probably look at that since that automatically puts us further ahead when we currently don't have any vehicle, um, loan schedules.
Yep.
We could get ourselves on the right foot by having that first payment, you know, to be able to make the purchase outright in five years' time, I don't know if Tony's truck will make it that long, but it's probably about where we will look at in the next five years to, to be able to make that purchase as a replacement. A new one, of course, I mean, it's been three years, three years we've been paying on it. Uh, probably we could, could looking at a longer timeframe because it was brand new, right? Was brand new, and it's not getting a lot of use at the moment, so...
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it might be a, uh, we might decide that, uh, it would be reasonable to have a ten-year amortization on that vehicle. Uh, what we need to do is set up a file for each piece of equipment, uh, it, say what its amortization schedule is gonna be, where the funds are, uh, coming from, uh, and then start, uh, putting that money aside. Even the thing like the Tahoe, uh,
Yep.
we would only be, are responsible for approximately forty percent of the cost of it, so...
We can still be ahead of it.
Yeah, we can start putting our forty percent aside.
As well. Remember amortization for large equipment purchases like that. Okay.
So when we get several thousand dollars in there, do we buy CDs or what do we do? Do we just let money sit?
Well, right now, we just let it sit, uh, at the bank, uh, the, uh, treasurers, uh, of all the counties, uh, and many of the cities in the state of Iowa have a, uh, fund where they invest excess money. Uh, so just like Pipers invests its money in, in a big fund and, uh, we certainly should be looking at it for any of the excess funds that we have, uh, because that has a, uh, better growth rate than the local bank does, yeah.
Better than just keeping up with the situation.
And it's, and it's really secure because it's all the county treasurers and many of the cities are going together with their funds, so it's, it's a huge fund. On the revenue side, for, uh, parks, we have shelter rent. Oh, uh, we've received an Alliant Energy grant in the past and park donations. And the question that the park board had when they met, uh, we show a shelter rent of twelve hundred dollars and is that where all the camper rent goes? And money where we rent the park out to market in the park, it all goes into that line item? Okay. Uh, so, the actual amount received in fiscal year twenty-three was seventeen hundred dollars. Uh, which is up from just the seven hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars that we see for shelter rent of the previous year. Uh, what is our expectation for, uh, market in the park and shelter rent and everything? This is just an average of the two previous fiscal years. Uh, so...
Market only did half the number revenues this year compared to last year.
And we adjusted their contract accordingly.
Right, so their revenue was less than a year ago.
So just leave it at the average of the two, or do we say it's gonna be? Uh...
I'm starting charging those horse trailers, right?
Yeah, we'd be very popular though.
It's some good money.
Well, the twelve hundred dollars is down from the seventeen hundred. So...
I think that's definitely-
Yeah.
Six thousand nine hundred, uh, this is the Alliant Energy grant. And...
It's actually any grant.
It's any grant?
I need to just change it to grants.
The grant funds this year were allocated for swing set, is that right?
Swing sets, yeah.
That's where the eighty-seven fifty and-
We had to put a new tube on that slide setup, that was over a thousand, I think, wasn't it?
That wasn't a grant, I mean.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it was, it's gonna be received.
So just say grants received. And do we? So far, we've received eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in grants. Last year, we received fourteen thousand six hundred dollars in grants and, uh, that would be the, uh, money that came from marketing the park for the waste containers and from the DNR.
From the, for the restaurants?
May- maybe that came in this fiscal year or year to date.
Is your sixty-nine hundred an average of year to date this year along with the twenty-three?
It is, just those two years. So should we-
Half of zero.
Average in, uh, uh, G also?
I think we should.
Yep.
And leave off, uh, fiscal year twenty-two?
Uh, I wouldn't leave off twenty-two because that's still an important factor when you don't get anything. There's always a potential that we might find one.
Yeah.
Okay. So average of those three.
Good to me.
And then park donations, two hundred dollars, tend to get around that.
Of course.
Tree grants, oh, Story County, uh, tree grants, Jody, uh, said that they are, uh, shooting for some and if they get them, they will amend the budget, they will let us know how much they're getting and then request a budget amendment. And they, and we're keeping the tree grants separate because we need to track, uh, trees separately for being tree city. So... That does parks and library, uh, cemetery is something that, uh, the city council needs to add, uh, well, once we do our bid, uh, for mowing.
Received any, well, I received one, sorry.
Received one?
February third deadline?
It was, no, that was January twelfth.
Is it?
Yep.
So we only got one bid then?
You know how much that was?
Four, eight hundred or something, a mowing.
A mowing.
And so we're gonna compare that one to doing it ourselves and hiring our own person?
Yep.
And buying the equipment, which would be, again, amortized, another piece of equipment to amortize.
Was that eighty-eight fifty what we spent last year?
Uh, that's what we've spent year to date, there'll be more spending this spring.
That's about eighty-hundred.
Eight hundred of mowing, uh, and eight, uh, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, maybe fourteen mowings.
So approximately, the new bid will be around twenty-seven-two. That eight hundred dollars. It's about thirty-four mowings. Which is, yeah, hundred thirty percent over twenty-four budget. Hundred forty percent.
And this-
And Tony has the quotes on that purchases and equipment as well, so we'll get those numbers together.
Some new mower he had, never done.
Now we're gonna be way shy, even at, even at the minimum, going with the twenty-seven-two for mowing. That's gonna be a big impact to that budget.
So is there a number you want me to put in here or wait until?
I think we could probably start, but let's, let's do it excessive, I'll make it ten, it's forty, forty mowings, thirty-two thousand.
Forty mowings?
So I was-
Why would you do forty more?
I was using thirty-four, so the eighty-eight fifty is seventeen mowings. So if you do another seventeen mowings-
Eighty-eight is seventeen mowings, that's the current.
Current rate of five hundred.
In July first till now, we've mowed seventeen dollars.
If you mow once a week in, uh, May, June, July.
Might get one in April, maybe two.
Well, one, one a week in May, June, July, that's thirteen. And then, uh, you have a couple before that, three in August and two in September.
Memorial Day is an extra mowing.
So the last one is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and five is twenty-one. Twenty-one mowings is eight hundred dollars of mowing. Sixteen hours.
Where'd you get twenty-one? Cause we use seventeen from July till now.
Okay.
That's four months of mowing.
Uh, May, June, and July, every week, in those three months is thirteen months, or thirteen weeks.
Thirteen, yeah.
Okay, and then one extra one because of Memorial Day, so there's fourteen there.
Fourteen plus the seven- Fourteen plus seventeen.
The month prior to that, you might get two mowings. August typically is drier, and so you get three mowings. In September, you get two mowings, and then you're pretty much done for the year.
Which would be good, but.
And so in a typical year, that's twenty one mowings. Now, if we paid seventeen so far this year, did we pay seventeen because our payment was for a bill that, for mowing that was done in June, we paid it in July? And so it's June, July, August, September. Which comes up pretty close to seventeen, but so twenty one, twenty one mowings times eight hundred is sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Sixteen eight.
And that's probably the number we would want to go against on any internal, and we wouldn't look at the entire cost of the payment of the mower. They would, we would have to decide, is the mower gonna last three years or five years? Have either a third or a fifth of the cost of the mower.
How many acres is the cemetery?
We're about eleven at the cemetery plus another half at the eleven, almost twelve acres total of cemetery space.
So that sixteen thousand eight hundred is where the twenty one mowings at eight hundred dollars a mowing.
Twenty seven two million, you remember? I was on it.
No, I sent it to you on email. Cause you gave it to me on a scrap of this paper.
You paid the bill on the tree removal?
Yes.
And you paid it when? In December or January?
January.
Okay, which is why it doesn't show up. We have a project fund three oh five, and that's where you're gonna pay it from. Which is where we have, oh, I guess twenty seven. We've paid twenty seven thousand seven hundred and fifty out of it already.
Oh, maybe I did pay in December.
So the balance would be coming out of there. Cause it's, we have forty thousand dollars total between the from the trees that we took out, wasn't it?
No, the ones we just did was twenty seven.
Oh, okay.
As I said, I must have taken it out, it must have been the last week in December.
It was, it was last.
Okay, so that's showing up in the right place, great. As long as we're here, let's cover garbage and then call it night. Sit at seven thirty. The garbage has a single lane item. And all, everything that we pay comes out of there. Well, what do we pay? We pay the contractor who picks up the garbage. We pay Ames for Resource Recovery. We pay spring cleanup, and we pay for the purchase of new bags that we then turn around and sell. Well, based on four thousand one hundred and twenty eight individual first cans that are out there, that are picked up in a year. And at thirteen dollars and fifty cents, which is what we are charged. And four hundred and eight second cans, which were charged five dollars. Uh, fourteen thousand dollars for fuel surcharge, nine thousand seven hundred dollars for each Resource Recovery, thousand five hundred dollars for spring cleanup, and a hundred and forty dollars for bags. We can expect to spend eighty three thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Which is just a little bit more than what we spent last year, and it's a little bit less than twice what we've spent so far year to date. And is there, you know, any reason why that might be?
We've had a lot of extra garbage this year too, so.
Oh, for extra services, that's not in there, so I'll have to take a look at that. On the revenue side.
As I say, those are the first two, so.
So we would, we would have gotten it in the revenue area.
On the revenue side. Garbage. Where's the garbage? We have what we charge people for their garbage. And that is based upon the same four thousand one hundred and twenty eight first cans. And four hundred and eight second cans. Only recharge nineteen dollars for the first can and eleven dollars for the second can. So our total revenue is that eighty two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Get a hundred dollars on the sale of yard bags, seventy dollars on late payment if we do our averaging number. Which, and a hundred dollars for sales tax. Which gives a total revenue of eighty three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Using the rates that we have today. Compared to the eighty three thousand one hundred and ten. So about seven hundred dollars more than the revenue we're taking in. And we try to run garbage as an enterprise. Which means that the expenses and the revenue balance as closely as we can.
Does, how does that work with the dumpster pickup, like the spring cleanup? Does that, is this included in the?
Spring cleanup is included in the on the expense side, and on the revenue side, when all that, when that comes in, that revenue is added to garbage sales.
Yeah, if we get, if we get money in from it.
Yeah, don't we usually get a hundred dollars or less, something like that? But I do, that is on the expenditure side. We do have fifteen hundred dollars set aside for spring clean.
We do not budget anything for our clerical people that do that though, do we?
No.
That's part of every one of the water bills that goes out is that stamping and costing for the services to run that system.
It takes them several hours.
For which part?
The building for the garbage. Shared costs with water and sewer, separate enterprises though.
The Deb and Carrie, Deb has paid a hundred percent of all the general fund, and garbage is in the general fund. Uh, Carrie has paid twenty percent of the general fund. So some of her salary is coming you know, is accounted for in the work that she does. In just general activity. Should it be more? Could it be more? Yeah. Do we want to be putting any of the salary against garbage individually? I think that gets a little complex.
I think simpler is easier in this particular circumstance. Unless we were going to separate completely like water and sewer.
You have to budget each part, yeah.
Separate enterprises. I don't think it's that complex that it needs to be, especially since ninety nine percent of it is a contracted replacement of thing. We don't actually pick up the trash, we pay somebody else to do it. They pay for us to collect the money to send it to them, so.
Did Resource Recover give us rates for next year?
Yeah.
Do we, have they gone up in the past years, or do we have a guess of what will happen?
No, I haven't looked at that one. That wasn't on my list of things to do.
And we, this would normally be our meeting two weeks from now. Covering it now just means we do less in two weeks, or we'll be able to do water and sewer and maybe something else.
I can give you what the sheriff's office is going to be doing.
Okay. Sheriff expenses. Doing the average and increasing by a hundred and five percent. Said sixty thousand one hundred, how close did that come?
You're over.
Cool.
Fifty nine something.
Fifty eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen and seventy two cents.
Eight thousand eight hundred and twenty, something's. Keyboard goes asleep, what's going on here? Okay, fifty eight, eight, what, fifteen?
Twenty.
Go to twenty, eight twenty, round it up.
F fifty eight, eight twenty.
That one just came in today.
Tony's notes on the mower and cost to, they can signify that.
Okay.
Please thank you. So I have to start to organize my inbox.
Just have all your emails kicked back, and that way you don't have to look at.
That works, that works. Always out on vacation.
So is there anything else in general that we need to take care of?
I have a couple of questions about the, the wages.
Okay.
In talking with Scott, what he says he's making is not what's listed up there. Hourly wage, are those all correct hourly wages that we're paying?
I don't know.
Scott and Carrie's are the only ones that I can remember. I'd have to go back and look.
Well, if you would email me the correct number, then I'll put that in for the twenty twenty four. And then that will affect every, that'll be calculated across.
Well, and then the other question I have that I brought up last meeting, we have alternates to different positions, but we don't have an assistant fire chief or an assistant EMS chief that we're paying. And they're expected to take over when the fire chief is out of town or EMS chief is out of town to do paperwork and, and everything, so. I'd like to see something added to at least those, those two assistants for their time and efforts, what they do when the two chiefs are out.
Yeah. I think this was brought up in the nineties or could have been early teens. And the consensus at that time was and this is a different council, so it could be different consensus now, was that how the fire department and EMS department organize themselves with ranks and rank and file is up to them. The city is paying for a chief in each one because they are required to do reporting. And if they wanna have captains, tenants, sergeants or whatever, that's their business. That has nothing to do with what is the requirement of the city, which is to have a chief who's responsible to the council for those departments.
Okay, but we have an assistant librarian and a part-time librarian that are getting paid to be, to assist the librarian. We have.
Hourly wage employees.
We have.
And sure, why doesn't the, if the chief is out of town, why isn't the chief paying the assistant chief to do his job? To me, to me, it's I don't think it is necessary, but this is a different council.
Well, I just look at it as you gotta, you know, you got a brand new guy that just joined the department that's making the same amount of money as the assistant chief with less responsibility, less certifications. They're, they're getting paid the same amount of money to, to run a call. And if the fire chief's not there, that assistant fire chief has to step up and know how to run the scene.
There are both two things that play into that as well, because there are multiple tax breaks for volunteer firefighters, volunteer police officers. There are both two different opportunities for those individuals because they are not a paid position. They're required to be paid a dollar a year to meet the requirements for workers' compensation. The city covers that workers' compensation, understanding it is a volunteer position. The assistant chief doesn't have anything to do, doesn't have to fill out that paperwork in the end shift. That's the chief's responsibility. That's who the council's gonna be yelling at when we don't get that monthly report, right?
Right.
Uh, we're not calling the assistant chief to say, hey, can we get this report? We're calling the chief.
So. But if the chief's on a, a vacation on a cruise, been on the cruise, and they're, whatever, he doesn't know about the fire call or it still has to be covered.
So I mean, to be honest with it, the, we've got five hundred dollars listed for both of those chiefs and we're talking about combining the, the chief or the EMS, the fire department on one roof that eliminates one of those chiefs. Break that fifteen hundred into additional payments how they wanted to buy it.
I think we need to talk to our attorney on that issue, uh, because uh, at some point they're no longer volunteers. They are employees.
They're still considered a paid-on-call, um, which still falls under, uh, fair labor standards. As they, they still consider them as a volunteer.
That's why I want to make sure that anything that we do, uh, passes, uh, the test of, uh, what we are by law required to do and that it doesn't take unknowingly something away from, uh, the volunteers.
You've also got to look at your, you're looking at wedges and apples again with library and fire because the library board is in full control of the library funds and how they see it fit to spend them. So they can have as many systems as they want. Where the city is more in control of the fire.
And we just budget, uh, and probably we should delete a few, the rows there that used to uh, have a librarian, assistant librarian, part-time librarian. And starting last year, they just said, uh, well, give us a budget of salary budget and we will split it up, uh, between the various employees. Which is why there's just the one dollar amount there now.
Which runs out to
I don't know whether Anna gets paid that full amount or
Two thousand. There are several employees that work over there. Most of them are two to three hours a week or every two weeks. So they're very small. Smaller than probably somebody volunteers. But throughout the year.
And so maybe that's something that, uh, we use that model with the fire and EMS. The chief gets, uh, paid the fifteen hundred dollars. And, uh, that's, um, hundreds, you know, that's so many dollars a week. And if the chief's gone on vacation, then some other chief gets it.
Or a thing like maybe, okay.
Well, what you could do is you just put the money in a hat and send it over.
Yep. So I saw the chief's.
But then I have W twos at the end of the year.
Yeah.
I, I do hear what you're saying, Joel. I do. But for a while. Those perspectives of the W twos also adds to the cost of operations.
Well, after, after our meeting, uh, the fire board meeting, uh, I talked with the fire chief and EMS chief though. They had wanted to bring up paying their people, the fire department a little bit more. But because of, we had to cut budgets, they they chose not to bring that up at the, at that time.
The EMS chief already paid his people almost half his budget.
Yeah, the EMS chief, that it was the, it was the fire chief that was bringing up paying and their volunteers a little bit more.
Steve, I've got the twenty-four uh, pay rates here. I was running some numbers, looking at overtime, so.
You have some numbers for me?
If you want them, yeah.
Well, can you just read me the hourly rates?
Uh, Anna Baldwin thirteen fifty. That's library director.
That's going to mess up the calculation though. Your calculations based on your over, overall costs.
Let's, yeah, let's leave the librarian because they said they want nineteen, nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This came off nineteen thousand, four hundred ninety.
Okay. All right. So Carrie would be seventeen dollars an hour.
Seventeen?
Seventeen. Pips, twenty-four oh two.
Got it.
Thirty-one thirty-six for Tony.
Thirty-one thirty-six?
Thirty-one thirty-six. Uh, Scott, eighteen dollars. Do we have Paul on there?
Yep.
He's twelve.
Yep.
Ten for Luke.
Park extra.
Yeah, park extra.
Road extra.
Snow is twelve.
Yep.
I believe that's all.
Fire chief's a thousand, EMS chief mayor. So if we do a two percent increase at a three-point-two percent COLA, then anybody who earns the two percent would end up with an hourly rate of thirty, uh, Tony would be at thirty-two ninety-nine. And these would be the others, but that's for budget purposes. They still have to earn merit.
Assuming we do, right?
Yes.
Which could come up with a meeting of when we, when we discuss the handbook. Including a specific standard number of years to basically top out of each maximum mayor. And then you go to COLA, which is what is primarily used most of the rest of the world.
Yeah. And also when we're talking handbook, I think we need to look at holiday, the way we calculated holiday pay and regulations of overtime. Because last year we spent six thousand, one hundred dollars on overtime and we had no durations, zero snow in effect. But we had six thousand dollars and sixty-one hundred.
Six thousand dollars.
Quit having council meetings.
I hear you.
Six thousand dollars. I'm just going to do a quick little math. I'm going to take the average of thirty-one, twenty, thirty-six plus eighteen plus twenty-four point oh two plus seventeen. Plus that divided by four times one point five. So an average hourly rate of thirty-three eighty million. And then we have five dollars.
This last year, sixty-one hundred.
Why would you use Scott and Carrie though? Because they're not full-time employees. They wouldn't get overtime, right?
True. I did, and I didn't know we did this a lot.
If they work more than forty a week, they can say they have overtime. Uh, so that is a hundred and seventy-nine total hours approximately of overtime. And we had
It was a hundred and
fifteen plus seventy-five.
Hundred and fifty-five hours actually last.
Two twenty-five.
I did count anything that Scott did above thirty hours a week as additional pay. Now, it wasn't overtime, but he's contracted for thirty and when he works more than that.
Okay.
So that's where I came up with a, a little more than Yeah, fifty-six hours for Deb and ninety-nine for Tony last year. And this last week blew up. Blew everything with, with the snow. So obviously different setup. But we had zero snow last year in effect. So anyway, I didn't know we'd get that far.
Well, we said that, uh, we have an overtime budget of seventy-five hours of pay for these three people.
The overtime that Scott does is because he does a Sunday test for Tony every once in a while that would be paid overtime. Is that how this is calculated?
No, that's when he works on a holiday.
A holiday. Okay.
If you work on a holiday, you do get overtime.
Looks like our left particle over here, E twenty-five. Stone up waiting. Five thousand dollars is what we have. Five thousand, five hundred dollars. If those employees, uh, work seventy-five hours, fifty hours of actual time, get paid seventy-five hours. You said, how much was last year?
Six thousand eighty-one dollars.
So just a little bit more, a fifth more, twenty percent more. And like you said, it, uh, was not as bad a year as this year.
Now, there was really nothing that in my mind would require overtime with the handbook specifying that you're supposed to take time off whenever possible to compensate for it, to, to stay at your eighty or, or sixty if it, so that's
But, so I'm going to lay this out kind of like what we have to ask the citizens when they want something or don't want something. Do you want it? Or do you want to pay for it? Do you want the service? Do you want to have to pay for it? So in Deb's instance, when she spends three to six hours a night on a meeting, because we've had a few of those. Then who's, who's running the desk the next morning at eight-thirty? Uh, maybe Deb, maybe Carrie. Carrie only works forty hours in the paper. So that's only twenty hours a week. Uh, which requires an awful lot of coordination to, hey, I'm not coming in the morning because I'm going to flex off half a day because I had to stay at the council meeting all night.
Yeah, I understand that.
To, to an extent, I mean, it's, it's workable, usually not so many times. Well, for the last year, all the meetings were on Mondays, which ended the day. So then, then with the meeting, we got overtime.
Yeah.
Wednesday will help. That'll make a difference for Deb over the next year. Um, Tony, I, I've talked to him and I think we're on the right page, right path. Um, we'll see as, as this, this week's not going to do.
Okay, this week's crazy, yeah.
So, but, uh, but he understands and expressed that, that what we could do, and this goes for Deb too, what we could do with the extra money, we don't spend in overtime. Probably going to come back to them anyway. So, you know, a two percent COLA or the cost of living or a merit increase that might potentially be able to be there if we keep it in, within our budget that we have for the year.
Since I was starting to, to Scott about it too, is that with his schedule, the way it kind of rotates a little bit from his other job. Um, you know, if there is a day where he could potentially work a Saturday so that Tony doesn't have to, you know, we'd rather pay that eighteen dollars to Scott for, for hours
Yep.
to come out and do stuff and let Tony stay at home.
Right.
Instead of paying him overtime.
Yep.
I mean, that's
That's exactly what it's so.
Right.
Anybody else have anything else to the budget?
We have a
Let's see, here we go.
Meeting that I'm trying to set up with, uh, Tiana and Park West. Uh, not, well, Tiana for sewer and water. Uh, because we are required to use a financial advisor uh, for our, uh, uh, debt service to ensure that we are setting aside the proper amount of money and everything else. Uh, and we need to sit down with Tiana and Wes uh, because we're getting closer and closer on doing Baldwin. Much to everyone's enthusiasm. I also received a, uh, call from, uh, gosh, last name just dropped out of my mind. Lives on Baldwin.
Boss.
Boss. Uh, they got a hundred dollar check for talking to Alliant Energy. Uh, because Alliant Energy is running a fiber optic line. And one of the possible paths is on Baldwin, uh, on the private property next to Baldwin Street on the west side. Which, uh, I don't know if Wes is aware of this or not, uh, but
I sent something out last October. Uh, basically what it is is Alliant Energy is trying to operate their own fiber network system so they can manage the grid. And they are talking with homeowners. They came through and talked to most of the individuals on Baldwin Street in regards to basically buying a ready way for the property so that they can run this, uh, along the power lines.
Five, five foot wide easement so they can vary fiber optic.
Yep.
Well, and it's going to be adjacent to the sidewalk. Well, I don't know on our construction how much, uh, you know, if we're going to be carrying up the sidewalk, uh, and the curb and the gutter and everything else, uh, do they really want to, uh, put that on private property or do they want to put it to
Tie it in the book.
Uh, right inside, so we're going to have everything torn up. They could just go down and put it in. I don't know if they're, uh, I'll talk to Wes, see if he wants to make contact with us. What we don't want to end up doing is having them, uh, in the middle of their project when we are in the middle of ours and have one or the other delayed because
Yeah.
they're both trying to do work in the same place at the same time.
Yep, agreed.
One other question. We've got some pretty good survey results back from our area people about who using what lawyer. Do we, is that something we need to decide to pursue or something we're just going to leave as it is?
What's the total fee then?
Yeah, what's our hourly rates? Get that information?
We have to get RFPs from people. We have to have them bid, so.
Well, you know, you don't do RFPs for our professional services. What you do is you ask for a, uh, proposal of services or something like that.
Because Baxter did RFP, so I said that.
It's, yeah, it's not, they will tell you that they do not respond to, uh, RFPs or they don't respond to bids. They do do RFPs, I guess. It's a different thing.
Okay. Well, A, do we want to do it? And then B, how do we do it? How do we ask if we, and decide if we want to check first?
I think, I think the key is that we have the, all the available information. So we have all the different contacts now that we know what communities are likely to uh, I think the next thing is is what are we looking at money-wise? That we have to compare that with what we have, with what we spent, that we need to decide whether or not we liked or disliked our attorney. Because that is just as important as what our decision factor is, is whether or not we were actually satisfied or you know, it didn't really matter much. We're not going to get hurt by it.
You're, you're remember how we, uh, selected Tiana? We sent out, uh, essentially a letter, uh, asking if they were interested. And those people who were interested, we asked them to come in, we interviewed them, we talked to them, uh, about their services and what their services cost. Uh, and it's not a little bit, it's you choose based upon whatever criteria you have. And it's not a little bit, it's you choose based upon whatever criteria you have.
Because it falls to professional services at that point, the best professional services.
Very eligible, I mean, for what we also could afford.
Yeah, when they can't hardly pay.
Yeah. All right.
But I'm not, hopefully we don't do any of this until after the budget's done.
Okay. You've been asking for information. Why come to us when I didn't?
We, did he send us a contract? Okay, and I think there's a three-day clause in there for cancellation.
After we sign, yeah, I think so. I'd have to go back and look.
The next.
Didn't we get something and then some secretary said, oh, no, those numbers aren't high enough? We got a second round? I think we got two emails about it. Or am I thinking something different?
I saw that. I don't remember which one it was.
It was, I don't think it was the attorney. I think it was something else.
Was it? Okay. All right, that was all.
It's so late at night, I can't remember what it is.
So I have our next meeting scheduled as Wednesday, the thirty-first at six P M.
Yep.
And there is another budget meeting. Maybe it will be in the February, which we'll have on the website, so we'll be there.
And you won't find me next week. We're going to be gone.
What?
How are the kids going to get to school?
That's what a substitute bus driver is.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make motion.
Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Steve?
Gone.
He's out. Thank you.
That was the S.
So if we turn that upside down and then wrap it in something.
Yes, upside down.
Well, if you're a star, it'll think that, wouldn't it?
Yes.